McFarlane from Australian American College is highly regarded by both sides of this issue. And he did a very similar study. The red lines are kind of the upper and lower bounds of what you'd expect with a wave surf boat. And then the pinkish-purple line on the bottom is a conventional boat at 100 feet. And this graph is for energy, like he recommends using instead of height. And he shows that it takes 550 feet for surfing to be like conventional boating. At 100 feet, next. St. Anthony Falls shows the same thing, takes about 500 feet. Next, another study by WIC, same thing, about 500 feet. Next. So how do the other studies show that 200 feet is enough? Next. The first one by the National Marine Manufacturers Association says 200 feet. It appears only in a paid-up published online journal based in Wuhan, China. The three authors all work or used to work for Mercury Marine. And McFarlane, who all of us respect, says this study fails to provide the material and evidence from which to make any sound conclusions. Next. The water sports industry, they're the ones that paid for that first study I showed, the bounty study that showed about 500 feet. But the water sports industry ignores their own engineers' graphs and data. Instead, they claim 200 feet is enough. Next. They do this by comparing a surf wave to little wind waves. As you can see in this drawing, they claim that all those little wind waves are just as damaging as a one big surf wave. That's like saying being pelted with marshmallows for several minutes. Next. Is the same as one fastball. Hundreds of marshmallows won't hurt you, but one fastball would break your jaw. Next. Wisconsin Water Sports Coalition also recommends 200 feet. But they've got a lot of major problems in their work. Next. First, they ignore all those other studies I showed you that all show about 500 feet or more as needed. Next. And then they kind of pick and choose their data. McFarlane had six of his 25 surf waves were still 15 to 19 inches at the 200-foot mark. But then on the right, the chart, the Water Sports Coalition, only one of their 20 data points was over 15 inches. Next. And McFarlane says that he felt like the water, that those higher numbers were actually more representative of what's really going on. Next. The third problem with the Water Sports Coalition, the benchmarks they compared to. The surf boat on the right was one of their benchmarks. It has a weight shaver attached to the side by suction cups. And then they also had the hydrofoil deployed, which mimics about 1,000 pounds of ballast. Next. And they also operated their benchmark boats if they were surfing at that pre-plain transition speed. Next. And for those who don't know so much how boating works, that middle one, that surfing with plain transition speed, plowing, makes the biggest weight possible. If they were going slower or faster on plane, the weight would be smaller. Next. And McFarlane shows that that means about four times as much energy when you're operating at that pre-plain transition speed. Next. So why did they use that as a benchmark? Most boats pass through that surfing speed very quickly, but they use that as their benchmark. Next. So the data supporting 500 feet or more, all official studies say that much. And then on the right, you've got two discredited industry studies, plus the Wavesport Coalition with the ski boat with the weight shaver suction cup at its side for that plowing speed. Next. So Lake Buella's not big enough to protect both the lake and the boaters. With the need to set back, the circle zone is so small that the circles are going to be crowded together. And then the other boaters are all trying to survive within that 500-foot buffering zone where the big waves are still dissipating. Thank you.
Next slide. I want to thank Joe Jones for setting this up. I'm going to take a few minutes and just discuss what that metric would do with Lake Buella. It's fancy word for just looking at the structure and depths of Lake Buella. And we'll also take a look at some space considerations. Next slide. When we take a look at Lake Buella, it is 812-foot deep, a lake which sounds big. However, it is really three lakes with five small deep-water basins separated by shallow areas, many down to 60, 80 feet, but definitely less than 20 feet deep. And originally, Lake Buella was a chain of lakes created by the dams. Steve referred to that. It's a flowage lake, long and narrow, and as many shallow points, extended flats, flats in mid-lake comes, and you'll see that as we go through the rest of the presentation. Next slide. This is a really cool, old, historical aerial shot of Lake Buella before the dam was put in. And you can see that indeed, these are all separate lakes. There's just little channels or little creeks maybe to get a canoe or kayak from one lake to the other. Definitely not big enough to take any sizable boat from one lake down through the chain. But it's sort of interesting to look back and see what the lake looked like before we put the dam in. Next slide. Shifting to the lake impacts on Lake Buella from the wave boats. There's really two downward prop wash. I won't spend a lot of time on this because there's already been some discussion on it. But as has been demonstrated in the previous presentations, there's disruption down to 25 feet of water. And the impact that we're seeing are the loss of weed beds. I've been fishing lake for 45 years. I'm a leper bastard, and we've noticed significant loss of weed beds and fish habitat. And then also resuspension of bottom sediments. The other big impact is displacement waves. There was some discussion about, a lot of discussion about that. Two times wave fighting, four times power down battles to boats. And again, the impact shoreline erosion, bottom scrubbing, property damage, safety issues with other boats, and recreational users of the lake. Next slide. When we look at protect Lake Buella's recommendations, the basis for those are based on the studies Okay, can you go back one? Okay, that's where we're at. The impact for the displacement waves is, you know, shoreline erosion. And next slide, sorry, I was not finishing. When we look primary goals, protect the town of East Trilakes. Their key assets, Steve referred to that, accounts for over half the tons of property damage and tax revenues. And then also to provide for the safety of town citizens, we have to look at the issue of the size of these waves in tight spaces and make sure people don't get hurt or there isn't any safety issues. Next slide. Now, when we take a look at the basis for the protect Lake Buella recommendations, we base them on the studies that were done, not only on our lake, which Terravigilis did a study this summer, but the divers' observations, the University of Minnesota study, and the Terravigilis Lake Warham study. So we're basing our recommendations on the data and the science that we have seen recently. And these are all on-water studies. Next slide. Now, when we look at our recommendations, it is for limiting wave surfing into an area of minimum of 20 feet of water, or less than 25 feet of water. The Terravigilis Lake Buella study noted bottom disruption at 21 feet. You just saw the divers' video and the disruption at 18 feet of water. And then they also have a silt out at 23 feet of water. We were going to do two runs. After the first one, they tugged on the rope to shut things down, came up and said, "We can't see anything." And that was a little bit of an isolated hump that's a little deeper hump, less reefer, but literally silted out. And then the University of Minnesota-St. Anthony Fall Study concluded wave surfing not be done in less than 20 feet of water from the lake bottom or 20 feet from the tops of the weeds. Lake Buella's primarily a weed-bottomed lake, and we do have weeds growing in deep water as far as down to 25 feet. Therefore, the 25-foot recommendation. And then when we look at limiting wave surfing to a minimum of 500 feet from shore, there was a lot of information presented on that. And that coincides with Terravigilis' recommendation of that distance to protect shoreline property and also to protect the bottom as it approaches shore, because it will scrub the bottom as that happens over and over. It will erode the set of the bottom and uproot plants, and it does affect vegetation in the shadows. And then safety considerations. And one that hasn't been mentioned is to offer a safe passage zone for people that want to get around the lake, that still want to be out and afraid of any bigger waves. Next slide. One of other municipalities, we have a lot of different approaches and different examples. Each lake is unique, so they're going to be different. Lake Geneva recommended a zone of 30 feet deep and 500 feet from shore. Puyottia and Agawina Lake recommend a zone of 30 feet and 700 feet from shore. Big Green recommends a zone of 40 feet, 40 feet deep and 700 feet from shore. Powers Lake in the town of Randall has sort of a unique situation or solution where they created a wave surf ban, and we'll take a closer look at that. Vermont, as a state, passed a law looking at restricting wave surfing to 20 feet, perhaps 500 feet from shore, but they also added in a 50-acre contiguous space that is needed at those parameters. They're actually going to be holding some hearings over the winter. They're considering making that 100 acres. The Wavesports Reform Coalition, which is a coalition of over 70 organizations throughout the state, recommend 30 feet deep and 700 feet from shore as well as 100 contiguous acres. And then 68 Wisconsin municipalities have passed ordinances prohibiting wave enhancement represented 370 lakes, 16% of all lakes in Wisconsin over 50 acres. Next slide. Now, let's take a look at Lake Buella and the 500-foot recommendation. And this also shows 20 and 30-foot depths. There's two things I want to point out here, is that when we look at those parameters, it breaks the lake down into really five separate basins. And the other is, when we take a look at the 30-foot, which is in green, and then you add in the 20-foot, really not much difference. There's a little bit of some area over by dockside that you have a 20- to 30-foot flat. But for the most part, they're pretty consistent. When Buella goes deep, and it goes deep, there's not a lot of 20- to 30-foot area. But that sort of highlights how those parameters would lay out in Lake Buella. And we'll take a closer look, next slide, at those areas. Next slide. So I use, I purchased some mapping software which allows me to create distance lines. So all of these little lines are 500 feet. I created distance lines. And then it allows me to draw an area which will calculate acreage. Now, I'm not a map professional, map acre specialist, this will be approximate, but it's going to be pretty close. And when we take it Long Lake, this is Wilmer's Landing here, you've got Camp Charles up there. We're looking at just under 40 acres of contiguous space with those parameters on Long Lake section of the lake. And the light blue marks on there are the west bay hump on the left, and then the mid-lake hump that Pat showed some video from earlier, that is between Camp Charles, Camp Charles Camp and the south shore. So that's what Long Lake looks like. Let's take a look at the next section. This is coming into the main lake through the channel. You have YMCA camp down here, the white bench up at the top. And with the same parameters, the 25 feet of water, 500 feet from shore, you're looking at just under 18 acres. Next slide. And then when we look at the main lake, or the middle of the main lake, this is the east horn here, you have the Beaver camp up there, Jesuit Island in there. We're looking at about 25 acres. And what's interesting with this whole part of the lake is that you have big flats that come over from both sides here, little deep-water trough there, but not enough to work with. And then the same thing here, this is a huge flat right through here, and a flat that comes way out through here. So it really does separate those areas. Those are all about eight feet, seven or eight feet deep. Next slide. And now we're looking at over by dockside, this is the main lake, east area. You have south shore on the bottom, the channel, the mill lake on the north. And again, there's a big shallow flat up this old bay here, this is all shallow through here. We're looking at just over 40 acres. And that just gives an idea of the amount of space that's available when we look at these various areas in the lake. Next slide. Okay, and then this is Mill Lake. This is obviously the 500-foot setback is what drives this. It's a pretty deep lake all the way around, but when you do the 500-foot setback, you're under 6 acres, so it's really, really limited in Mill Lake. It's not a very good space. Next slide. When we take a look at other area lakes, the two lakes, other lakes in town of East Trilakes, Toddler Lake, 155 acres, max depth of 26 feet, so there's some depth, a mean depth of eight feet. And then Army Lake at 80 acres has a max depth of 17 feet, mean depth of eight feet, so not quite as deep. And then we'll also take a look at Lake Geneva, 5,400 acres. Powers Lake at 451 acres, and the North Lake at 440 acres. Next slide. This is Lake Geneva with their 30-foot depth, 500 feet from shore parameters. Obviously, a bigger lake, you know, and they're going to have a lot of space to be able to lake surfing. They can be in the middle and will be 2,000 feet from either shore, and a lot of space for the waves to dissipate. It knocks it down from 5,400 acres to about 3,400 acres, just a big lake. I mean, so just wanted to put that in, just give a little context. Next slide. When we look at Powers Lake, the town of Randall, this is the surf pattern that they are using. And this is approved as temporary solution effort to keep surf traffic in deeper water. Pretty much keeps it in 30 feet of water, goes upwards around a few humps here, but, you know, that's something that they're trying down there, something to think about. Take, next slide. And when we look at that at Powers Lake, this is roughly what that track would represent. That's covering about 92 acres, 93 acres. So they do have some space down there, and that might be a solution for them. But it is an interesting concept. Most just come up with zones, they came up with tracks, so I just wanted to put that aware for that. And then the next slide. This is North Lake. And there was some discussion about North Lake, as our investigators did some work up there as well. And they do have a zone up there, it's pretty much 500 feet from shore. It's a pretty deep lake, it's down to 80 feet, drops pretty quick. They do have a few sandbars, but not in the middle. And they have 120 acres left when they're 500 feet from shore. The west end of the lake, that basin, there is no wave surfing allowed. And then the other difference with North Lake is that they only have like a river or a creek launch, there's no way to get big boats on the North Lake. So they have a situation where they have a resident population, that's it, they're not dealing with outside wave boats. But they do have 120 acres. Next slide. And, yeah, this is my summary slide. I want to thank the town board for, you know, working with this issue. It's not an easy issue, it's a very challenging issue. And I know it's a lot of work, and you're caught in the middle. But you do have the authority and responsibility to protect the town waves as well as all the properties, and then also provide for the safety of town residents. And we appreciate all you, you know, being there to look at this issue and try and deal with it. Lake Buella presents unique challenges, three separate lakes connected by channels, a lot of irregular bottom structure, which we saw on the maps. And the challenge is going to be the space, limited space for wave surfing. There'll have to be some considerations for that in the five-deep basins with 7 acres or 41 acres. And then our recommendations for protect Lake Buella are supported by the science, we follow the science, and we recommend that, you know, any area for wave surfing be done in a minimum of 25 feet and 500 feet from shore. And then also, there has been some citizen advisory input and over the past year, and there was a strong turnout for people that want some action on this issue, the April electors meeting, also the multiple surveys. And then I know the two candidates, the LBMV elections, they, both incumbents won, and they were supportive of protecting the lake and doing in-like studies, and we appreciate them for doing that, we learned a lot. So that's my presentation, and I will turn it over to Richard.
I represent it from Seward Pack.
Oh, Seward Pack, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm.
Forty minutes.
You don't get all forty.
If I don't take it, if you want.
Thank you, Mike. My name is Tom Slawski, I'm chief biologist at the Southeastern Wisconsin Regional Plant Commission. And I didn't go to the next slide, I thought I'd talk just briefly about that and why I'm here. Our organization was established back in 1960.
Don't touch it, step closer.
Oh, step a bit closer, okay. And so we are not regulatory authority, but we have the ability through state legislator and statutes to conduct inventories, prepare plans, and most importantly, intergovernmental coordination. And it's back in 1974, pursuant to the Clean Water Act, at that time, Governor Patrick Lacy formally designated us as the State Line Water Quality Management Agency and to develop water quality programs. So, which is essentially coordinated with Wisconsin Department of Resources, where they're the regulatory form, but we're sort of the data agent for in-plan preparation arm of that, or part of the same program, trying to assist communities achieving fishable and swimmable goals. And so I'm here, by invitation from the chairman. So we're here to assist, and that's what I'm trying to do today, to talk a little bit about the aquatic invasive species. So, next slide. I'm going to kind of give a brief outline of what's going on, at least as far as what we know for Buella Lake, a little bit about boat traffic to and from the lake, and recommendations then on potential actions to protect the lake moving forward. As well as, if there's time, I think there's one more speaker after me, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Then I'll talk a little about considering a carrying capacity analysis that may help kind of planning for changes to boat capacity and recreational use on the lake. And next slide. Chapter in R140 of the Wisconsin Ministerated Code, it details invasive species ID classification and control rules. It helps, it defines, you know, what is prohibited for restricted species, regulates transportation, possession, transmission, and introduction of species, as well as establishes preventative measures to show actions taken to slow its spread. And on Lake Buella, these are some photos, I didn't know what kind of screen we're going to have, so I would have probably changed my slides a little bit, but at the top there, there's currently the purple known, purple loosestrife, early leaf pongweed is here in the corner with the crinkly leaves you've probably seen, and the Asian water milifol is everyone's enemy down here, and deeper mussels, of course. So that's currently what's going on, you go to the next slide. And this is, I suppose, public enemy number one, or probably the most feared species being transmitted currently in and around our lakes, the starry stonewort. And you may recognize it, it's related to, it looks very much like kara, or they call that, scum cabbage, but in nitella, but it spreads asexually through these volvles and fragments. Here's a volvel here, it's sort of like a star, a five-pointed star. And this species can cause significant algae growth in shallow areas, to the outcompeting other species and choking out the water column. And so it can be very devastating to fisheries habitat and overall aquatic plant diversity overall. And when you get so much biomass, it can create dead zones, you know, or low V O at night when there's no sunshine, you know. So it can really, it can really be devastating. So once you get it, what's unfortunate is there's no effective treatment to remove it. Nonetheless, leaving it alone may be the best strategy we're finding, if you do find it, but I can talk about that more maybe, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of challenges. Once you do have it, it depends on your lake, its depth, where it is. And, but once you do have it, you, there is no way to actually eliminate it from the lake, so far as we know. You can use diver-assisted suction harvesting to eliminate it from some localized areas. The problem is, though, these fragments and these volvles are, I mean, that one's shown quite large, but they're quite tiny.
I want to point that out.
And they're, yeah.
You can typically get the end there.
Yeah, so they're, they're easily distributed and difficult, you can't suck it up, you know. So once it's in there, it's very difficult to get out. So the shallow areas are more easily treated, but it can grow into very deep depths too. So again, and though, particularly when it's intermixed with other species, also makes treatment very difficult. So you go, you go to the next slide. And it was first discovered in '78 in the St. Lawrence Seaway, first observed Wisconsin in 2014, a little mesquigo. The nearby lakes with starry stonewort near Buella include Eagle Spring, Lower Phantom, Lauderdale, and Geneva. Typically, it's likely spread through recreational boating. And lakes with starry stonewort either have a public launch or are immediately downstream of invaded lakes. And lakes without public access often have no aquatic invasive species. So I don't think it takes a lot of smoothing to understand this stuff's not flying around. We're really good at transporting this stuff on our lake, from lake to lake. It's human vectoring, I guess. And you can see the dots on these, on this map is showing different years, older years or bigger dots, but you can see they're not random. And once you get an outbreak, the likeliness of nearby lakes is expanded. So you can see the dots, almost like an autograph, like bacterial growth, spreading on the landscape. So you go to the next slide. And this is kind of, the recreational boating is considered a major cause of this based on sort of studies, and particularly attachments to boat hauls, trailers, motors and gear, fishing lines, nets, and waders, and as well as trapped in builds, live well, ballast, and bait buckets. This is a diagram up there of a live well, and you can just see the hose, ballast, and things. So once you, you can get things stuck in any part of this system. And so concerns regarding specifically those to wave boats, ballast, is that filling the ballast allows intake of invasive species. Some have quite small billages or fragments of plants that can be pulled in. Empty ballast can hold residual water in which AIS can persist, and they cannot be easily inspected upon entering or exiting water bodies, that's another difficulty. And traditionally AIS removal, removing visible material does not address ballast because you can't see it. And most public launches do not have equipment to flush the ballast. And so my, next slide, my point being is that all boats carry a risk of transferring invasive species, and all boats have areas that are difficult to inspect. So it's very challenging, but it's not specific to wave boats, this issue. So, next slide. And Buella Lake used to have a clean boats, clean waters program, and so is able to pull data from 2016. And this shows, they take records on visitors who come to the lake and where they're coming and where they're going. And so visitors before and after Buella Lake within five days only includes lakes in Wisconsin, so this doesn't include all our friends from down south in Illinois. But the most frequent lakes before visiting Buella were Eagle Spring Lake, 71 acres. trips, Potter's Lake, twenty-two trips. Eagle Lake had eight trips, and Little Mesquigo had seven. And the most frequent lake before visiting Beulah was Little Mesquigo, Puywalki, Delleven Browns, and Eagle Spring. And I know it's hard to see this map, but, but it just means, makes a lot of sense. If you're, if you're coming to Beulah, then I also fish in Eagle Spring, right? You know, so, or, or, or Potters. So, but you can see, it always fascinates me, there's points all the way up, well north, all the way north of the state that are coming to visit this lake. And so you can see the potential for transportation. Quite that of it on this map. Next slide. And again, most likely a spread from nearby lakes with frequent traffic include the Eagle Spring, Potters, Eagle, and Little Mesquigo. And AIS documented in these lakes, but not in Beulah, would be starry stonewort, rusty crayfish, and Asian plant. So potential AIS introductions from lakes with less traffic include Lake Michigan, which would be Quaga mussels, and of course, Lake Geneva more recently. Spiny water flea would be Mendota, Mendota, and spiny water flea is also been at Lake Michigan since the late eighteen, nineteen eighties, and as well as biohemorrhagic sepsis, banned Chinese mystery snails, and the yellow iris. So there's always the next threat, right, coming to our lakes, whether, whether it's azo plankton here, this is the spiny water flea, Quaga, or rusty, or ivilla, you know. So it's important to be vigilant. Next slide. And I had a really good discussion with Joe, and we followed up with a conversation. He sent me a summary of what he thought would be good for Beulah Lake, and I, I couldn't agree more. He stated that one of the largest impactful areas a lake district can have on invasive species is to run a comprehensive clean boats, clean waters program, in particular, boat inspectors and educational interactions with boaters. Couldn't agree more. And I, I would also say, as part of my recommendations, I believe that it would be a great asset to restart and enhance the boat launch, AIS prevention efforts, establishing, re-establishing clean boats, clean waters, monitoring, education campaign for hunters, ice fishers, and other non, non-submarine users, as well as maybe consider a carrying capacity analysis to assist with this. So, and with that, we go to the next slide. Although we missed the September fifteenth notification for DNR, I, I encourage the district to email Chrissy Kosek at DNR to see if they can still apply for a clean boats, clean waters, surface water grant. Since you had a grant in the past, it, it may not be as need to be so formal.
That was, that was LBMV that had that, correct?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, yeah. And, and it, there's limits on what's eligible for those expenses, but it looks like mostly for paid time for inspectors to be there. So worth a shot for providing some offsetting funds for this. In addition, we can go to the next slide. Hope County passed an ordinance that required using washing equipment is available, and so, so the town should consider a similar type ordinance, so that you can have a required decontamination station and device provided at the public navigation water access. There's only one site. You don't have to worry about equal, equal levels of treatment at different sites. So anyway, as an example, and I've got a link to the Hope County amendment there, or ordinance, I'm sorry, and, and website as well. It's not just Hope, Eagle, the next slide. Burnet, certainly, yeah. Oh, one minute. Burnett County also passed an amendment, watercraft contamination station, and you can catch that, that one back in twenty eighteen. Look, and I got a link. I, I assume all my links are working in the Far Point Presidential Center, but there's twenty eighteen Lakeline article on that. And so with that, I'm just going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there, but the best, best offense in this case is a, is a great defense, and you have to be vigilant. There's, there's, there's so many opportunities for stuff to be transferred from lake to lake, and that, I'm not even talking about bait buckets and worms and all those other things that are going on as well. Those are all equally important and difficult and challenging for our lakes to protect them. So with that, that's, that's what I got. So, thank you.